Anyone can get the number off something? Yeah. Alright, alright. Ready? Alright, let's. It started here. I hopefully you just. Oh, the that I say is I'm not. The control of which ten. They shouldn't, I'm here out. You just will. Evening, everybody. Alright. What is there? So welcome all to the. April meeting of the Sipseton County Planning Nation. This is our regular monthly meeting. And. You're taking notes tonight, Julian? Okay, you've got four of us, five of us who are here in attendance. Alright.
But even better.
And.
Those. Those house in MBR are perfect. You pulled them and I did. Is he still tailgating?
Okay, well, when that comes in, we'll add it to the nice. Add it to the chest. First. For business, our minutes from the March meeting. Have you taken a look at them? I saw, I saw them too. Anybody have any issues with them? Because I didn't. I thought they were pretty good. Okay, it probably made me sound better than I actually was. Very thorough, yeah. Alright, I make the motion that we approve the minutes on the March nine twenty twenty three planning commission meeting. Seconded by Michael. Any other discussion? All favor?
I'm.
Alright, we have an agenda this evening, obviously. Any comments on the agenda? Alright. New business and plans to act upon. Let's see here. Which one do you want to do first? Do you want to go for the very one that was get planned second? Pretty much.
Yeah, let's go through the.
Let's go through the whole group. Okay. Alright, land is all good. Last, so if you know gateway. Phase A, I want to get A two. Step right up.
Okay, good evening. Nice to be back. It's been a while. So I think you could compare this development business much like a football game. Because. You go through a lot of corners and sometimes. And you really get down to the tail end. One team gets a lot of momentum going. And I think that's what we have here going. It's just a little gateway. It's in the long haul. You've been at it seven years. Already, we've overcome obstacle after obstacle. And we were able to fortunately get it up from you. For the infrastructure work. And that place made a two and a half way down plate underneath two oh nine. And changing who two oh nine. At least had a bit, but five lanes. We expect that late to be on hopefully sometime this summer. But we were able to work out a technical permit. With Pendo and the township and able to get same looks open there in possession. That was quite a project there, beautiful building. Just extraordinary. And it's really a catalyst that we think will launch our project forward. One of the other key move now, we can keep things going. Our phase one A, we called, we have the same loops which are now open. We have five other pads surround that. Most of the improvements are in. And tonight, we're very fortunate to introduce Wawa. To a project. And we have lots of people here from Wawa. Other engineers talk about things that may come up during the meeting. And so one of the things that we're working on very hard is to get additional funding to complete two oh nine. We need a trip manager tomorrow morning. And on that subject. Yeah, the money out there is very competitive. And there's a lot of public money be raised, but there's also a lot of private in this budget.
Well, it's probably.
Yeah, nine million is the exact, so.
It's a growth problem. It's stacking hard. It's probably.
Yes, I know there's been some issues.
There's no stop.
Yeah, one thing about this. Pendot project, it's called ECMS project. Basically. I mean, it was good that we got a grant from Pendot. But the ground rules they set in motion were, this is our contract. We run this job. You have nothing to do with it except fund it if there's shortfalls. They hired a contractor. They're managing the job. They're will tell you. A lot of frustrations about it. Or we can do, they did hire a very good company for traffic and design. Who's our project manager? Who's helping push this contract before. But it's difficult because all the infrastructure on the road. Moser Center Road and Smithfield Lane. Have all been done by Brian. Why not local contractor? He signed a contract with us. He's delivered. But this other contractors out of work, it's all, it's been really challenging. We don't ever even get to bring them in any order, but it's not easy. So anyway, this is important for us to keep a map out of the budget going forward. And with that, I'll introduce the Gunko Tech. We all know because you've been here many times before. Thank you.
David, your pleasure. So I'll just do a quick summary of where we were and where we're coming to today's work. So the prior land development plan. There's a prior sheet, existing resources inside analysis plan shows the prior development that's. Proved under the phase one land development process. And the primary land development block process had, you know, different configurations of the portions of land. So we're getting down, coming back and after having come back already for the phase one. A one portion of the site getting improved for the savings. Then the retail, we're now looking at. Off the side of the main entrance drive. And now what's going to be a means test. Next narrative as well as the depth and question. So one of this direction of ours to do with the difference of. I'll bring the the. System of the site. So I apologize, you're on this fact connection. We'll pop this world and go to that. Okay, sorry, I better thank you. So what's on the board right here goes basically the layout of one A one and the one A two portion of the project. The former one A two project was a inline retail to the bank. And the version we're making now is the Wawa and a best. The pad area on that side basically has been redesigned, but honoring the original infrastructure that we talked about. For the stormwater for the site. So what you see on the eastern side of the site, there's two infiltration basins that are basically our work quality. And groundwater recharge basins, they're retained in the design. Bring together then the new layout. The Wawa is basically a six thousand forty nine square foot building with eight pumps. Under the canopy along one of these route two oh nine. The entry drive that we previously closed and we contain. That can be serviceable. The south and the north partial, they're worth the portion of development. I'll run in this. This is not going to be subdivided. This will be the pond of this particular lot. We'll save it online. I mean, address is what we talked about over there. But that driveway then serves to both the Wawa and the restaurant. The restaurant incorporates the previous driveway that we put on our prior land development plan. And then we're introducing the driveway going out to Music Center Drive. The service basically to improve the circulation of the site to allow cars to come in. Instead of routing someone from Music Center Drive. Onto what used to be where the scene out Smithfield Lane, back down off the loop road.
Yeah, John, that's what I brought up last time. That was never supposed to be there. And that's already been cut in. I don't know why it's gonna be cut in. I don't even know.
So the road beside is what that was for. That wasn't intended to be land development at all. That was really the sort of the road. Process.
And that. Oh, no, Scott, that was the construction access to the entire site. That was the.
Oh, Music Center.
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, right. Bring the original, the original construction.
Right, so you close them off, right?
Yes, when we start construction.
He's saying it's ready to open. No, I'm introducing that as a dry lane.
No, it wasn't supposed to be a dry lane. You have your, you have your, you're like, you won't come up there at the top. Up there at the top. There, wherever that is, it's going to feel like the bank. No, there's good legs for it. And they're coming. What's it supposed to be? Another entrance? Into this project off Music Center Drive. That's what we were told. I don't know. Let's start seven years ago. And now there's one, not only that hasn't done, but it's not even built. And I'm really quite angry about it.
Yeah, so so Bill Park isn't related to this at all. Wasn't Bill?
Well, it's Bill. Whether it's related or not, it's not up there. Yes, so we're gonna establish the construction entrance for the original construction of the project then. Then take it out. When we start construction again, it will come out. That's that driveway is not, it's not at the same location as what's being proposed here tonight.
Is that another entrance?
Yeah.
So this entrance, let's go through the purpose of entrance. The entrance is posed to basically provide circulation. For the Wawa, for cars that are coming in. To be able to come off Music Center. Off of that into the site and then ace it back out to the signal and continue on. The idea behind that is basically if you look at the distribution. If the Wawa doesn't have it, basically all the, all the access comes through here equals back out through here. So if you're going to come in, you're going to jog over, back and around to get into the site. You're coming down. From, you know, you're coming in the Music Center Drive. Or if you're coming in from route two oh nine, you're also going to go all the way back around and get back in. So the point of it is to give you a better distribution for people coming in. Get them off the Music Center Drive quicker rather than have to come through. This drive is also intended for people who are going to be up, going up through the loop road and hopefully going to four forty seven. You know, that's going to be part of the, that was the stuff in the original stuff in the project. This is a and keep circulation here in a better pattern for for this layout. You know, before we had inline retail and this was all loading in the back, it's a different rate. Didn't have, didn't have the same. Need behind it. So that's why I don't want you to, I don't want to confuse the fresh enters. Would be intent for this. This is not that construction entrance. It just coincidentally, there are, you know. Factoring that they're not the same and not, not intended to be. From any earlier session, who is construction entrance with the purpose of starting the site of the whole.
When you say get is a good structure, what, what is the?
The photograph that Scott brought up, construction entrance. Right by the utility pole that's. Down here. So that construction entrance is coming in. Off Music Center Drive to serve the site.
Go back and go the way that when you're adding the.
Right, this one's being introduced. It's part of this land development project.
Which wasn't supposed to ever be there. Everybody still goes to the signal at the entrance, John.
The signal at entrance gives you a route up to the front. If you're coming in, making a left turn, it's certain that it coming through the signal entrance.
I'm not even gonna dump everybody on Music Center Drive that doesn't want to sit at the signal as entrance. When it locks up. Like it does every, every, you know, summer day. I mean.
But again, we're only talking about this user here in terms of the value of it. Anyone going beyond this, we go up.
The value of it. You can't even get a parking lot on Marshall Street. Come on, we know what's happening. Come on.
May I make a suggestion? I spent considerable time studying his second driveway. And all the ramifications. Can we leave this a little?
Yes.
And then a little more discussion.
So big picture, just give everybody a sense of, you know, the overall facility. There's going to be, right now, there's supposed sixty two parking spaces on the Wawa, forty one for the restaurant. The site itself. As far as the. Layout. Of course. The truck, the fire truck, turning maneuverings throughout the site. Giving us entrance off of the main access drive. Our motion farm drive room as well as circulating around the two buildings to three hundred and sixty degree access. Part of the. Circulation associated with the overall servicing facility. Those similar access, both tanker trucks that support the Wawa. And the service of the. Maybe fifty tractor trails that'll service for supply to both Wawa and for the restaurant. I'm going to go through this, come back any drawings. If you want to stop me, you can point back away. Questions? So just to give you an orientation about the rating on the site. That I spoke to earlier is that these basins remain where they are. The truck is a sure that for a quality purpose. The prior plan had two small fire retention basins that are now being replaced with an underground infiltration basin for waterfall and groundwater recharge. The site itself, the Wawa sits anywhere from ten to fifteen feet above the route two oh nine elevations. The pad for the restaurant, about maybe. Half a foot or so within elevation of the Wawa. So think of this like a plateau here being created. That would go also to the comment. I think we'll talk about since the comments. Mr. Trustor's letter. One of the comments was. The cars utilizing the pumps and their positioning may be toward route two oh nines. Each parking will be ten fifteen feet above two oh nine. So the headlights won't be a, when you're driving by, they will not see the headlights, learn to turn to the right or to their left, that matter, coming up the highway. So the drainage system remains the same. This still has the same water sheds that go out through Marshall's Creek and through Broide Creek. From a infrastructure point of view, it's very similar to what we saw before. Changing footprints and layouts from parking with circulation around the site. With respect to the. Landscaping. This incorporates a number of things you've seen previously in terms of the tree layouts along the main road. There's a landscape buffering that occurs along the eastern side of the property. Drouted along the water quality basin, that's the other water quality basin. The area basically within the complex will have a series of ground plantings as well as. um the ornamental trees and shade trees. Um overall, you know, keeping the street scenario uh along the main roadway, both two oh nine, motor farm drive, and Smithfield Lane, and then the buckering along the B seven. There was a comment, uh, Mr. Trust said it adds some different trees, and what we looked at was treated uh as part of this review. It wasn't in the set, and I'm gonna put up, we haven't here, uh more or less a uh we have, we're working with the second consultant, the lighting plans. It was not a lighting thing in the set, but we're gonna provide you one, our, our fed a lot, before getting the last genius firm, uh, wedding, uh consultant. Um the lady consists of a number of uh fixtures that are around the buildings, which goes around the perimeter, give a uniform lighting pattern. Basically, the, the restaurant and the uh Wawa will use a uniform type fixture throughout that portion of the, of the site. Um, the, I took in a scenario, something that's provided John, you know, in a, in actual detail drawing, get him, some be reviewed for good ones. Uh but all otherwise, we can simply what you've seen before, in terms of lighting patterns, we're, you know, servicing parking, uh, yeah. Uh access to the facility in the drive aisles, and there's a focus into the lighting, you give to the, you know, for the entrance points for providing active lighting at the points for the entry for everything in. Um from the layout view, basically everything created to make your way towards the property line, the purpose of the, you know, adjacency, so the the light tells off through the landscape buffer before it gets to walk to Music Center Drive. And you get a drawing that provides that, uh, a drop off in a way. So between the lighting and the landscaping, uh, utilities are very similar, I mean, you're using building, but they're, people have the same infrastructure that's built off of the main roadway servicing the site, so you'll have a combination of water from Broide Creek. Uh electric will come through, electric will be a combination of underground on the site, there's gonna be overhead running through to service the motor farm drive, actually, it's up through the site. And then everything in front will be underground, we were, electric, communications, uh, obviously water, gas, and sanitary as well. sanitary on this is all programmed to go to the, from the initial first phase one A was all about going to do the or to the uh east route for uh fraction compensation back in, this is the core of the site that is in that uh sewer service uh operation, you know, and you use or you allocate it for this. That's really the part of, the most part, I can show you some elevations. I didn't know if there was any other.
General, I couldn't point, all the lakes gonna be all pointed down.
Yeah, the old dark sky could have a layer, um, so that pattern saves, you know, uh, focus here, but we thought, no, 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 no lighting on the project. The and we provide a dark sky analysis to John, for his review as well. Also do this. Uh and I guess I will, I must be better caring of some of the others on some part, regarding the elevations. So in the plan set includes both the footprints showing the layout of the Wawa convenience store. Uh these are elevations, showing the material types being used, the color pattern, uh, as well as the signs associated with the building. All four sides represented on this drawing, um, from a uh uh frontage point of view, looking at it, if you were, you know, in pulling up to the front skirt, it faces right through a mine, that's always on the top right of the drawing. If you're looking at it from your rear, when you come in from the main access drive, this is what you see from the, it basically looks like a four sided building, more or less, uh, in terms of the facade and tree. The canopy structure for the pump for the, for the uh, yes, here is important to say. Uh at this appearance, you see the canopy, it's got the color pattern that you see associated with the main building. There's all the features and the, the various columns that you said. Stonework that's around the building, the pump, houses, and most of the sun, uh, canopy structures. Uh and then obviously signs associated with the Wawa.
For the other Wawa. They're all the same guy.
And then last thing on here is traffic, where you're basically kind of the traffic, where your architecture marries up to the architecture of the main building. Using similar features, similar materials, so it'll blend together. So I could even open the questions or talk about a few of things, uh, I can, I can walk through. That's a lot of the comments, especially related, I think, even the way that you know, how you wanna do it. I would say for the most part, just for the big picture, majority of John's comments, we can address and comply with his comments.
Okay, I was gonna say, I had to turn it over to the, to the other one, I mean, they're very well, I'll leave them there. Anybody else?
Yeah, just go over here. Just so I understand, we're extremely, you know, this plot here, because the rest, the fast reach, that's all in the law.
Correct, yeah, the final for phase one A F two application.
I, I can't help myself, I feel the need to share that there's been ongoing conversation, you can probably see it as only my agenda items. Um around reducing um commercial parking requirements, so just as a, a note for future phases, like myself, when I see this massive parking area over here, I sort of scudder and hate that. Uh because I know it'll be empty a lot of the time, so just, and.
And so you're aware of the, it'd be very likely to say, hey, this.
At that point, that won't be built, and I can be just coming back for a different layout. Okay. They'll recreate reviews, and maybe the less parking is what, right? If, if the parking is there because the business needs it, great, if you're doing it just because it needs special field time trip requirements. Coming to ask for a sure, that's all.
And John, do we know what restaurant is going in here? I'm not aware of it, and it is more.
Not identified. But none of, to answer your question, like, uh, a great illustration of what you're talking about is the parking uh that is next to the Coles in downtown.
Or Walmart, or the Giant.
Some of that parking, you can put one word, it's usual, but that parking next to Coles, I think they leased it to the traffic company or something, but no. I mean, we're, the parking that we're doing is all needed, you know, by the users, we're not doing any parking that's over the floor, like that.
Just so long as you're not e- expanding parking to mean the ordinances, because that, that might be changed. Correct. I mean, I, I apologize for that, I'm saying.
No, no, no.
Yeah. Uh, anything else you wanna share, or? But that's.
Maybe, thank you.
I, I don't wanna, I, I'm not trying to say it in any way, I just, I don't, um, can I just understand that new um driveway just a little bit more? Um, is it a it's both way, both directions, both ways, no lighting? Um, and if, if so, has there been a, is there some sort of traffic study around? Obviously, I, I can see why you're that official to the Wawa, it very makes sense, otherwise going up is too far. Um although I'd say going right and right, we're probably what I would want to do.
Yeah.
But there's no light out, I think, because you're gonna drive either.
Yeah, right, no, no, what?
I think the problem is always now, is traffic making the left transition on the Music Center.
It will be, no, that's clear, it's, no, traffic state goes in, that's a right in, right out.
Yeah.
It will be no cross traffic movement. Even Island Burger is changing to one way into Island Burger, so there'll be no cross traffic at that intersection after.
Trap the other side.
Yeah, to your, to your point. Look back at the word on the initial phase one, about what do Music Center Drive, and the consensus was make it a right in, right out, into that left turn. You know, allow, don't allow anybody to make a left out because of the cabins, and the single does, is the single gives you the controls that turn into the site. And to get to Music Center Drive and then have access to the site.
Are you gonna be put a little like islands in Music Center?
Yeah, there's an island.
It would be a porch out there.
Yeah.
Do they call it?
Yeah, the, as a quote, it would be a porch.
Okay. Is that?
Yeah, serve that purpose to restrict, and it'll be signed as well.
So effectively, the people that will be using
No light.
That will be people coming from two oh nine.
Hey, Southbound two oh nine.
Yeah. If you was the president, if you live along Music Center Drive, you can use this driveway to come in rather than make the left or right on the Smithfield Lane, come back around, come back around in the same, the lead and go back out.
I'm thinking of you, Scott, I mean, in all likelihood, you're probably gonna go border lane to Smithfield Lane down to the light.
Yeah, that's the only way I'd be able to get it, not really, in any kind of, in any kind of.
So, I mean, just, I mean, honestly, that, I mean, that strike will probably be better for you.
I'm sure, I'm saying. No, it, no, it won't, it's gonna just, what's gonna happen is, because that all, that's going to, and I'd say out towards the interstate when it backs up. They're not gonna wanna wait for the later Wawa, and they're gonna all, we're down there, and they're all gonna make a left into that.
Yeah, what I'm saying is that all.
They'd make a left in the Smithfield Lane if, if they would do that anyway.
They're gonna do that anyway, it's almost supposed to be one.
Right, no, it's still.
This was almost supposed to be one, and now there's two.
Yeah, if the use change and looking at the difference between the retail and looking at the restaurant, this makes a lot more sense in terms of bringing, you think about it from a convenience point of view, it was a follow you a lot. If people wanna get there and they're backing up to this traffic light here, they're gonna take the longer route through Music Center Drive, back around through Smithfield and back in to the certain exact point moment, a moment ago. Rather than do that, cut them off earlier, let them get into the site, and then they get back out again, and leave. This just keeps less traffic coming through this.
Right, drivers, and your boss of route two oh nine.
Also, from a real urgency standpoint, it's ways to have two. Yeah, and that's the other, that's what we have. Yeah, the, the other entrance goes through this building here and jogs around, so it's not, people, people use at least, and getting them off the road at here, I mean, concerns right here, this is actually aiding, turning people into the site before they have to go past wire lane, go around, come back into the site. So it's, it's not what was originally anticipated, but because it wasn't this used at that time. So we, when we looked at it, we said, you know, what's gonna be a better way to get the people in and out and not to have them to make this route up and around. And that's the best way to do it, and it keeps left cars from making their way up here and around. It's a more efficient way.
It totally, it totally, everybody looking at it and saying, well, I think.
And now we're not even putting same look people to the same.
Yeah, you still have to say, you still have to say about the intersection for, for left turns coming into the site. And for, and even for part of the dog, you know, it's only coming down here, it still uses this, nothing that's not usable. I'm saying that this provides a more efficient, it provides better regulation to the user.
Right, John, the one point, we introduced, uh, Mike Spiegel now to Wawa, to Wawa, and it can really says firsthand why this access is important to them.
Because we didn't. No, I'm honestly asking, I'm not. That would depend on, they gave them a temporary assignment, but it's on. So, you know, I don't think it's, but they're really, that probably has to do.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I hope that can help you understand what, what Wawa does and what we have, and it involves several across a hundred, couple hundred Wawa's on our end, so I'm pretty good idea of what our movement is like, what our customers do, what our associates do. And, and very similar situations have come up in other stores, that what we found is having one entrance causes, I would call it almost like some safety concerns, because you have everybody trying to go in and out of one entrance, no matter if you have dedicated left turn lane, dedicated right turn lane, we found that there's been some, you know, it caused a lot of jams, especially during busy times, which is usually the breakfast, lunch, and now dinner um rushes, uh, becoming more applied, so coming into this site, and I understand where you guys, you know, some previous conversations that you've had. Um, we said, now listen, having a second entrance, you know, if there's an opportunity there to have a second entrance alleviates a lot of the congestion. We also recognize that the second entrance is really not meant for, it's not designed for, and it will not be for larger vehicle, larger trucks, and so on and so forth, that's pretty much, you know, customer vehicle, customer cars are gonna be using that entrance, it's not designed, all our, uh, and, and as was shown before on the truck turning tetlist, all of our deliveries come through Mozart Farm and through the main entrance over here, so there's nothing large going on to Music Center Drive.
Is there, is there a drive through for coffee and stuff?
There is no drive through on this location, there, everybody has to go in and park, which is another reason why, you know, we try to get our parking counts anywhere from fifty to sixty people, or fifty to sixty spots. Because we found that, you know, there's a, I would call it like a sweet spot where people, you know, actually wanna come into the store and not see that it's too busy and get turned away and just continue down, you know, and, and not come to the Wawa. Um, you know, some of the things that we look at too is, is obviously safety is always our biggest concern. So we wanna make sure that the movement through and around our store, you know, for not just our customers, also our store associates, also our, you know, all of our delivery vendors, our own fuel trucks, you know, so we wanna make sure it navigates properly for everybody. Um, so that's, when, when we kind of look at these sites, that's what we take into account, you know, how do we wanna maximize or, or, or try to get our parking count to a certain degree, but how do we also make it safe for the orientation for the movement? And I, I think this second entrance offers a lot. Now, from experiences on sites that are very similar to this, we have a, you know, major, you know, state road, you have a, you know, I would say a development road coming in, and a rural road in the, at the rear of the site. The experience that I've had and I've seen at our sites, the rural entrance, or the, I would call it, almost like the back door entrance has been pretty much the residents that live in the area. You know, we've done studies where we, we can actually see, and it's really from your cell phone, uh, data, and you can see where people are coming from. And when you look to see people coming and entering into our sites, a lot of them for these kind of designs that are similar, are the residents that live back in those areas. So there's a benefit to them with these, you know, kind of entrances that are, not to say they're hidden by any means, but people traveling out here on two oh nine. You know, it's, it's not an easy, you know, obviously the traffic lights withdraw people, it's a major intersection. You can see our signs at the corner, so people coming up, or maybe aren't from this area, but are taking two oh nine somewhere. They're gonna see our sign, and they're gonna turn here on Mozart Farm. You know, that's, that's pretty much what they're gonna do, they're not gonna know where this, you know, there's an entrance here on Music Center Drive. You know, so these are things that we've seen on, on sites that are very similar to this site.
Let, let me add something here, my day. Um, first of all, this is the traffic, so I made some comments for everybody.
Okay.
Uh, I, uh, I initially was very concerned about the second entrance because I was responding to uh, um, concerns from people that live on Music Center Drive, especially in the specific area. Uh, I then met with Wawa on this and was uh told pretty much what you've just heard here. And one thing that resonated with me is I use the Wawa that's further up two oh nine, that Sellersville Drive. And everything that we're talking about here is a problem there, which is if you go in from Sellersville Drive, which is the main entrance, when the Wawa is busy, or, and, and remember, much of Wawa's business is is food, it's a lunch business, the dinner business, so there's a lot of in and out that's going on at the time. Sometimes it's very difficult to get into that entrance or to negotiate which, who is going which way to get out from this one, you know, it's, it's very complex, and what the reliever there is, which I think is similar to this, is there's a right in and right out that goes out to two oh nine. So if you're going south of two oh nine, you don't have to go through that. And so I can see some of this as being, um, let's say desirable for a while, but what I've done here is I asked for uh parts of the impact study, and with the traffic study, uh, on what the traffic is now on Music Center Drive in both directions, what it would be. Um, and what it would be with the addition of this driveway, as you can see, doesn't make much difference. You know, it's, so it's pretty much a a wash from what we've got to what it'll be, so anyway, present that and take a look through it. But that kind of said to me, you know, we're, we're not talking about um increases in traffic on Music Center Drive of any significance. Okay.
Question. Do you anticipate the light and the roads to be finished before the Wawa's included?
Yes.
Okay. Now, out of the last thing, there was a, there was a concern, question about saying it's opening without light yet in place, with under recognition that there's not that much traffic. I mean, there's definitely some, I've probably been in it three times already, great building, it seems pretty smooth, well so far, uh, but it is hell of things to get out left, but I also know about that, about it going out, but I do know what's wrong.
And that's the rea- that's also the reason why Smithfield Lane is closed off, because that every component in the app is for the exclusive use for access to and from the medical office building.
Right.
So with Smithfield Lane being closed off, it doesn't allow then people on Music Center to cut through and even through the project in order to get access to another way to go north or south on two oh nine.
Oh, so it wants the light and the road is expanded, you can, so the thing will be opened up.
That is correct. Smithfield Lane will be opened up at that point in time, you'll get the right in, right out.
One thing's important, our pen dot permit doesn't allow anything else to open without that light being in.
Okay, that was the only question.
Yeah.
Will this be a twenty four seven operation?
It will be, yeah. Most of ours, actually, ninety nine point nine percent of our store is the twenty four seven. And the way to look at it, we cater to a variety of. And the way to look at it, we cater to a variety of customers, not just, you know, during the daytime workers, but you have, you know. Doctors and nurses on night shifts, you have workers and industrial plants on night shifts. Um, we actually get a pretty good draw from them coming in, so um, that's, I think that's why our business model looks at that.
Haven't been in a Wawa at three o'clock in the morning sober in thirty years.
Some of our stores do sell alcohol, yes, we're just starting to get into that, uh, we have about. Well, the fifteen, I think it's about fifteen stores now that have alcohol, uh, and it's only beer and wine, you don't sell hard alcohol.
Is it planned for this one to sell?
Uh, it will have the seating, which is a bigger P A liquor control board.
That's twenty-six seats or something?
Thirty, yeah, you have a minimum of thirty seats, it's. The license that convenience stores and, and stores like Giant Food Stores and all that, they get what they call an R license, which requires thirty seats, you know, they call it a restaurant per se. Um, but yeah, that's a requirement, and we prefer not to, and in fact, nobody really uses the seats. People, for the most part, will either get their beer, go home, or they'll get their food and go eat in the car. Uh, a couple of stores, uh, general managers that I've spoken to at stores that we sell beer and wine. Have said, maybe there's somebody sitting in the seat during lunchtime, but they're not drinking beer, they're not having wine, they're eating their oggie that they did. Yeah, you are, I mean, yeah, you are allowed, yeah, you're allowed to have, you're allowed to consume, it's probably two cans of beer or. It's uh, two glasses of wine roughly, there's, there's an ounce associated with that, milliliters for wine associated with that, but. You know, and it's not something that we promote by any means, you know, I think our, our interest, at least what we've seen for the beer and wine sales. Have been, it's mostly local residents that are coming to get, you know, they get some gas, they get something to eat. And then they bring a six pack home or a bottle of wine home and enjoy that at home.
John, what's in your letter?
I have quite a few comments, but a lot of history, uh, I would say possibly fifty percent is. Landscape related and it's, a lot of those comments are. Ordinating comment uh, of that nature. I'm not too excited about them unless the applicant is going to try to reduce the landscaping.
I don't want to try and equalize, if you have an issue with what you know, but I think hopefully our goal is to get them to less giving, um, aggressive, but.
Is that, is there anything that is in the latter that, yeah, it's not planned to?
Yeah, just one thing, it's for, there's a question on your letter to align the two driveways. And because of the geometry, we already have the existing bit of the structure on that side, so can't align to. Um, that would basically take this out in a way where we're, we're maintaining the uh basin and the square location. So, and then it would be an opportunity for doing loading with that layout. So I was gonna ask, given the, uh, we consider this to be a very infrequent scenario here. Cause you really don't, you know, people basically are either coming here or coming here, and most people who are gonna come here and get gas, they're gonna take the car over to get the gas. Where that's the case, so we see this as a frequent. Well, appreciate it, I, yeah, so we're gonna look to retain that, uh, in that scenario. Uh, we're also gonna look to modify the violence here to, to make the uh comment about the less all backing up.
Okay, good.
We're gonna go from, that'll bring us from sixty-two to sixty parking spaces for the law.
Okay, is there a sidewalk on that new little lane?
There's sidewalk that's not, not long here, we're not gonna sidewalk access that to uh Music Center Drive. But we don't have, we don't have sidewalks along the entire lane. So sidewalk, I say sidewalk nowhere, but we don't have a sidewalk that continues up, cause you're not, we're basically separating ourselves here with a buffer. Along Music Center.
But do you have, do you have a sidewalk between, what's it called?
So there's sidewalk from Music Center Drive through Smithfield Lane to access the entire site.
And is there a sidewalk from Booger's Farm Drive to the access point of the Wawa?
Yes.
Is it on both sides of the road or just?
On both sides of the road, um, this is the sidewalk that we're talking about now that will allow you to access uh through into the Wawa. And sidewalk here will allow you access to the.
Man, I know those, it's like right now, that sidewalk, I was, I was wondering about. And you walk into the Wawa. Yeah, is that, is that sidewalk in nowhere?
These sidewalks all lead you into the Music Center.
Okay.
So any sidewalks on internal road network will allow you to get, you know, do the thing as well, as well as the.
John, did you review them?
I did not see that yet.
I was gonna ask if there were things in there, but you didn't.
John, was there any, almost my letter, maybe I didn't. Uh, but I think you talked about two, um, the alignment and the change of the parking spaces uh there. Um, the, we are asking for the waiver, that a two hundred foot distance.
I, I was just gonna suggest that you should at least bring up your waivers.
Yeah, I have a list.
And as I noted in my letter, uh, several of them are identical to the ones that you've granted previously. But I do believe you should be made aware of.
These are eleven letters from twenty-fourth February?
Yeah, yeah, twenty-fourth February, and it's, but twenty-fourth February, you got to consider. Outlines the, the various waiver that you're requesting, and to John's point, he's matched the prior waiver from Gori granted. And the point about, I was trying to point out the difference in the driveways. The center line of the driveways, center to center exceed the two hundred foot distance. But if I took the curve return, and I consider the work case, uh, by asking for the waiver, he said the curve returns are close to the two hundred feet. Waiver for the first one, it's uh, sorry, uh, the second. Uh, on that list is, between drivels, yeah, section one oh, one zero, I think point six. And again, I, I was, I'm being conservative and asking for it, but I, you know, I, I would say, John. That this, the center line distance to the driveway is two hundred and twenty-five feet, so we're not asking something that's. It's just, if the curve to curve, if this curve returned here, it's the return here, that's a less than two hundred feet, and that's why we're having for the waiver. But I, I'm normally center on and center on. Right, so we exceeded on center on the center line, but we were conservative to make sure that anyone looked at the waiver that we covered either way. So we are within two hundred feet away, uh, the curve returns are right. We're about a hundred ninety-five. So that's, so going through the waiver list, we can talk about each one if you like, but there uh, relative to the uh. The first one is relative to stormwater, we had a scenario with one of the point of uh, points of analysis that. We had a uh, two-year storm event that was greater than the existing one-year storm event. Uh, that's where your design is actually built and require waivers, so we're just maintaining that waiver, because it is a portion that occupies. On this track that we're talking about. The distance to the driveway, to just refer to, um, you know, the fire uh. Waiver allowed for these driveways that are year-long, Booger Farm Drive. We just did a, in case that was considered the same on a new driveway, include that as well. The sidewalks uh were a difference between having a forked sidewalk and a ten-foot wide. Uh, planning strip along the roadway, designed to maintain five-foot sidewalks with a four-and-a-half-foot wide strip and a six-inch curve. Running along the length, and again, that's just actually sidewalk discussion earlier, that's the same sidewalk from the previously proposed. Or retain, retain those in this uh, uh, updated drawing. Uh, the same width, the same width, yeah, same, same geometric configuration that you'd made, which for last time, we didn't change that. So, in terms of outlining each of the different waivers, uh, again, these would be repetitive. Uh, because of the first waivers that were granted, but there's still a quick look, because we're going back to you with a revised version of the plan. Number four was the sidewalk and uh, uh, walkways, basic parking spaces. We set back them five feet, um, in this case, you have uh sidewalk that's adjacent. To the parking spaces, uh, when you think of your normal entrance, blown up to a Wawa, you pull up to the sidewalk. You don't have a five-foot strip of grass or grassy between you and the sidewalk. Yeah, the whole volume is just all along. The uh parking spaces, as you see at the uh, maybe a little hard to see, but it is. So number five has been in curb radio, uh, the cord is uh. Five feet and we have two feet in some places, uh, because of the, they, their geometry, the islands. And the uh, curb turns along the driveway. Again, uh, hopefully these are the same as the prior.
So, if we've already proved all these, we're proving you have to prove again, because the land is on a flash change, okay?
Yeah, if, if you don't, if, if you want me to outline each one I can, I don't wanna skip anything, but if you, if, if this has been. So the next uh waiver was reverting to the minimum three inch caliber tree. Uh, we proposed two and a half to three, and that was approved on the prior land development. Um, again, the next item is similar, uh, another section called up the same requirement of three diameter caliber trees. Uh, again, so that we're proposing the two and a half to three inch, uh, consistent with prior rule. Uh, the next side, number eight, is that it'd be a minimum of one shade tree and three shrubs. During thirty liter, being a storm where mentioned basin, uh, based on limited space on the left side of the foundation four oh one. Um, these, uh, required number of shade trees, or reduce the round perimeter of the infiltration basin. And that is again, consisting of our original group, we're not asking for any less, we're just basically on, for the same reason, um, for shade trees.
But back to my previous comments, uh, so you were asking for a reduction in landscaping. Without particular scenarios.
In accordance with the original approved plan, right, because we're not, again, this is the exhibition we're talking about. That we didn't plant, that's for the old development, although we've actually up against that previously. So that's right, we've got the same waiver, the same respect as the prior.
But no more than.
No more, no, no, no.
But what's problems complying with it now?
No, we are, we are, we're using the, the base, the basis is the same in effect in terms of its location. So the, the, the plantings that we didn't propose here, we're not proposing them again, in the same scenario, we have the basically, we're using the same limits. Of the development that previously approved, and keeping with that, we're asking for the same waiver.
Well, what I'm asking is, if, if the usage change, they don't need the waiver, then why do you comply with the plantings?
Cause we built the basin and the layout that we did, it's for the purpose of the air out, so we're basically trying to maintain the same infrastructure as we had. But looking.
Basin's there now.
Yeah, the basin's been disrupted, there's uh, basically, if you go along, you'll see the, the, the long eighty state around that, and it's just a triangle basin. Uh, currently old home used to be up on this, it was model home.
That is quite high, right, that's like ten feet higher.
Yeah. To give you an idea of the grade change there. So as you come down Music Center Drive, this is at Bankhead Hill sign, you see out there, so the bottom of the hill here is four forty-two. The top up here is four fifty-seven, so it's, it's got a fifteen foot difference in, in elevation coming up. This site is, is a mess here at four sixty-six. So this is about ten feet higher than the adjacent Music Center Drive here, and then about twenty-four feet higher than. Where Music Center.
And that landscaping is on the embankment or?
It's a combination of, on the embankment as well as. That plan areas up along the uh, top of the basin. Uh, the next one was a pipe size request, uh, the uh, number nine, where you change in the pipe sizes inlet. That will be around the top of the pipe, so it'll match the, the same as the pipe, the smaller pipe. We basically, instead of matching crowns, we matched inverse in order to get our fall. Because of the depth of this, we have restrictions running only back to our site and the constraint, so we basically utilize that. Different, get a previously approved waiver, how we can sign our, our former name for the site. Uh, there's a comment about that, I don't know, that's not, that's more. Same uh type of comment for number uh ten, ten was a request for the two-inch drop across the inlets. Um, we have a point one ten, point one drop instead of point two, uh, and that again, reflects back to our original group plan. And the last one is against former related, where the minimum size uh required is eighteen inch, um, and then we have pipes that are um. Twelve inch diameter for refrains or for leader collections, um, and fifteen inch, uh, so we have basically. Those are for the original plan, we haven't changed any of those request waivers on any other pipe sizes from the ones that were version approved. That does the waivers.
And I don't think there's, as long as they're willing to comply with the other problems in my letter, I don't think there's.
Unless you want to, there's no real need to go into any. But I'll be happy to offer my opinion.
Somebody had two here.
Uh, just for the sake of the mess, what is your review letter dated?
My review letter was dated April eleventh, two thousand twenty-two.
Will, will it recharge these stations at the gas?
Uh, so we designate some of the, to allow, like, I'd say Tesla is probably the biggest. You know, one that, that comes into our stores, I mean, right now we have over, I think we're up to a hundred and ten stores. Then our chain will go about a thousand stores, so we're over ten percent charging stations. We actually don't pick which store to do it, Tesla does, uh, so, and sometimes they'll tell us that they're interested in a store until we're. Close to construction and sometimes even in construction. Um, they've actually come to a couple stores after our stores have been open and said we wanna be here. They do everything themselves, they go through their own permitting, they have their own transformer.
Okay, so you're not sure at this point then?
I'm not sure, although the only thing I can speak to is that because it's proximated to a major highway or a couple major routes. Um, I think it's very similar to a lot of stores that they have gone to, so I think the chance of them going here, they're pretty high likelihood.
Okay, did you say it was off by one?
So it usually it's anywhere from eight to twelve spaces that they like to be at, but the spaces are assigned. That it can be for both, the, the charge and also for normal customers.
Right.
So it's both, some people get a. It is, yeah, and we usually try to figure out where they are with respect to the site, so that way we're not putting by like where the air pumps are. Uh, and so on so forth, but no, it's, I mean, as I said, we have over a hundred and ten stores that have EV charging stations in them. Tesla's the majority of it, uh, they've got EV Go and Udrify America, I think are the other ones that do a lot of the stores.
And the other thing I'd like to take into consideration is how close another one is, I don't think there's many that are close by here, so.
Uh, I don't think so, I'm just trying to think of our other stores up here, I know we did it out in, not Lacy, but. But they have one, now by Cabela's, that one's got EV charging stations.
Yeah.
Mount Pocono, I think maybe gang.
Uh, people are often asking. And if they're not doing these parking spaces, it screws up the, the required entry parking.
Yeah, and then Tesla is okay with it being dual use, I mean, that's why they like to have, you know, anywhere from eight to twelve. That way it's, you know, very rarely do you see all the spaces that these stores fill up.
Yeah, but they gotta sit there for twenty minutes.
They do, well, and sometimes you can longer, some people take a long charge for forty plus five minutes. Sometimes they come in, sometimes they sit their car, that's what I say. Well, an interesting thing is sometimes people will come in twice, they go in, right, when they first start charging, and then they come back in again near the end.
Yeah, really.
And we are coordinating with Fed Ed, with its, so the power line comes over and goes out of Motion Farm. We're planning in advance for a certain number of parking spaces that would have potential. Be electrified, so that Fed Ed doesn't have to come back at a later date.
Power should be provided.
Cool. We have actually one of these stores in New Jersey that, I don't know, I was on the campus, it's a bit tricky right now.
This township just.
Okay, I'll pass on the kind of route.
You wouldn't have been at it the same way you want right now. You comply with everything and gone uh, because. And the waivers, John, do we need to be vote upon them?
I don't know. Conditions are all the same.
We can say the waivers as per the letter of Mr. Cope's, it is February twenty-four, twenty twenty-three. Are granted if there's any condition in them with any conditions noted, and that would be enough. Well, in, in his letter, any conditions in his letter, that would be enough, as long as you're referring to that letter. All of it's solid waiver and you're C O K. If you want to vote on the. Plan itself until there's some additional cleanup that year or now. That's up to you, time on the plan runs beginning of June.
What, what's the number of county, could, could, county? You got it right?
Yeah, was there anything in that?
I, I didn't get a chance.
Did you guys see it?
I, uh, I shouldn't say it, I, I read it, nothing jumped out.
I uh I shouldn't say it, I I read it, nothing jumped out. It's just, we may want to wait till.
I want to wait for John to review that, because like I never really said, it's up to you.
As an applicant, we didn't see the mind just manage. As an applicant, we must be issued this county that, county letter, that's something with some of John's comments as well.
I I didn't know. Uh I motion to recommend approval of the plan. So and. You all want?
Well, let's see.
Okay, I would make a motion recommending approval of the waivers as requested by uh. This midfield gateway plan as per letter dated twenty fourth of February twenty twenty three, that would be motion one, motion two would be a recommended approval. Of the revised land on the plans, I uh not presented um.
So yeah, it's per Mr. Trustworth's review letter based.
So long as the applicants um complies with the. Um I'm listed in review letter dated April eleven, two thousand twenty. Three. L B L, when you say, you know. Uh but the exception of waivers.
Uh you you have uh one motion on the waivers, I think you mean that under one all the approval, or did you combine them both?
That's two, I probably do the approval of the plan first, uh but I'm ready to start.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Bye.
Close, me.
Now, when I just quickly looked at the planning commission letters, and there's nothing that jumps out, uh I don't think there's any, a lot was just straightforward.
Because.
Yes, and uh. I don't think there's anything in there that you can comply with.
And John, you already did.
Yeah. The only thing which affected the second uh motion about uh we'll comply with John's letter to determine that this is a few items of the. The driveway uh line is to talk about, to really maintain this little faucet here. I just wanna, I, if you want to say it to the satisfaction of Chris, he's aware of the the items you just talked about. I'm, I can work for that.
The John Crusler review letter, break for eleven comma twenty twenty three, and any changes that are. That needed satisfaction.
Okay, so someone moved something.
Sorry, who's second?
This is again. Okay, uh any further discussion? All in favor?
Bye.
Close, me. I know it's a shock every day.
Well, thank you very much, we appreciate everyone's time.
Okay.
And thank you very much, appreciate it.
Alright, next item. Get plan, first energy, East Ground Bird, where we started with. Full yard is big, who we have?
Good evening, my name is Scott Miller, I'm a spot season employee.
Hello.
This is the get plan clarification.
Okay.
I have some items, so basically, this uh project, and I'm here with Paul Reel from First Energy. Um so. We were approached by First Energy, they are looking at expanding their full yard at the facility located on Intendence Road in Hanch. So the property is about eight acre, they're developing the front area as shown here on the area. And the rest of that area is under.
This this one has the existing company is the.
Yes, so so the the scope of work that's involved with this. Is basically, they want to expand the area of their uh what they refer to as the full yard or storage yard. Which consists of um going, there's currently gravel here, we're going back into the bank. The bank is in the same way with a small retaining wall, and then we're also gonna make some adjustments to the grading here to get it up, because it's on two different levels. So um based on your ordinance, it indicates that if we, even if we reduce the amount of thirty minutes. We need to do the whole full stormwater analysis. So um what we had proposed, again, and where were you?
What? Two, uh reducing impervious.
We are reducing the impervious area here, because we're gonna replace it with a little grass. Um we're reducing it three hundred and sixty five square feet.
Sure, I'm developing. And any square feet are you just? Are you disturbing in total?
We are less than an acre of disturbance.
Okay, so you don't have to go through the county.
Right. So obviously, we read your ordinance. Couldn't get, it was very clear that we needed to get clarification review.
Like there's nobody ever thought back in the day that they go in the other direction.
So basically, what we're asking for this evening is a waiver of the land development process is one. And then two is the uh uh waiver for water quality as the upstream bank erosion and the groundwater recharge. So basically, doing any stormwater management. Is we're reducing the amount of impervious for the site.
Ron, can we do that? Is this in, is this in subdivision and land development, or is it also a boot zoning that we cannot leave?
If it's a subdivision on land development, you can certainly recommend the waiver. And no act by to do it without a written request.
No, I know that.
Without any conditions to it, but yes, you can do that if it's only enough.
It's 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 in two sections, it's in chapter twenty two, which is under uh the subdivision land development. And chapter twenty six, which is your stormwater.
Right, so the stormwater, the stormwater plan can also. Be waived, although. How many square feet are you disturbing again?
Less than an acre.
That's not a man.
We are about um that thirty thousand square feet.
The exemptions in the stormwater management ordinance are five thousand square feet or less. So. Unless. Planning commission and the ordinance is fit to go beyond that. That's what you're referring on, five thousand square feet or less.
If it's reducing.
He's producing a little bit, we're also disturbing something else, so I haven't seen the calculations, I can't really. Comment beyond that, that's why I ask, I'm being the starter.
When you explain what you're doing again, I'm kind of lost.
Yeah.
What you're, you're watching what you're explaining.
Alright, so basically, this area in the back here is is an investment that has gravel. So we are proposing to put a retaining wall.
With cut.
To cut it back in, but also, we're also, we are reestablishing. Grass in that area that that was gravel to bring it down. To name, to fill in this area, so it it's kind of cleaning up this area.
The shaded areas, grass.
The the whole shaded area is the proposed impervious that we're doing. Okay, and then this area over here is currently gravel. And we're actually providing additional fill in that area and putting the cap down. So that's the extent of the two improvements.
So the net between the left and the right is less?
It corrects.
It can gravel earlier?
Uh not based on the compact stormwater calculation. If you were, if you were doing an analysis, I'm sure the engineer would want to see that if it's gravel, compactly gravel, they want it, it's impervious. Yeah, so we don't have a problem submitting a plan or an engineering review. It's just a matter of do we need to go through the entire land development, and we would also ask for a waiver of. Additional stormwater management facilities for this. Because per per your ordinance, we would need to do infiltration testing up there, and then we would have to put in a storm drainage system. Or basically, an area that we are reducing of the size of a parking space, so. Um and I understand, you know, the water quality and things like that, and we could look at. Providing some kind of measures for related to that, but again, we're trying to. Do this as simply as simply as possible for this project without violating.
What the laptop is now, what what is there now?
This right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, this is. Yes, yeah, you can see the area we have the holes and um Bob. Bob may be able to explain it a little bit better, what they use the facility for.
Yeah, trailers and all the mystery, you would store it out in that area. Where we like to pave, um and the the surface is unlevel and it causes very slow response time to the crews. So we'd like to improve the maneuverability out there by recreating it, repaving it um.
So it's compacted gravel now, like, like what do they call that, salt? Project runners, like they call it, like something you put on a driveway?
Yeah, yeah, basically, it's a compacted driveway space.
So it's compact, so it's considered impervious, so all you're doing now is paving covering it.
Yeah. Bringing some down, painting it.
Would you still be sorry for stormwater? You think that would be a wise idea?
Yeah, I don't think it needs to go through land development, I mean. I understand, so good at all, I think we ought to take a look at the stormwater, uh I'm not trying to make work, but I think it would be. In the town's discussed interest to have a letter from us saying that. You did it, and we don't think it's necessary to do anything, not by the time to detect it.
Then yeah, so. What what where, do you know where the stormwater goes now? Is there catch basins or in- infiltrated?
There is a. There's a, there's a basin back in this area. But it's it's basically um completely um uh overgrown in this area. Uh I I think it's converted back to a wetlands state back there.
So there's no storm pipe going to the broadhead?
The only thing that's coming out here, we're collecting water that's coming off of over over here, there's an existing pipe that actually goes. Directly to that basin, so we're just paving, putting additional fill on top of that.
When when you say basin, that was a previously constructed stormwater management basin?
That is what I'm assuming it was, but um it is actually very dense growth back in here, and we had difficulty surveying. The perimeter of that area.
And where you're, does that area of the site where you're disturbing, does that flow backwards up basin as well?
Yes.
And it will continue to after you're done?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so obviously, we'll put you in F measures, yes.
Yeah, you're right, would the neighbors say that there's a problem with water coming off of your property on here there's now?
Uh I don't, I think there's never been any issue of, that I would move back in that area. I mean, there are, I have a bracket, there are.
That coordinated health, that's your neighbor?
Yeah, back in, back in here, there's some, um I think there's some residential area back in here, it's apartments back in this area.
Coordinated health lot, even with your back here.
This one, yeah, this one here, but again, but I've never noticed, and I don't use evaluation, just. Did not notice any impervious coming out of that basin.
Not were being flooded, and you say we look at it, no, you're not, okay, yeah, I think it's a good idea, because.
Yeah, yeah.
I just, I have business and property, and we we used to get inundated with water from the adjoining properties, to the point where it flooded our parking. And it is this, I don't, no idea what's going on there, but maybe an opportunity to make sure it's not a problem. And then uh, you know, it's for your own protection as well. There, I mean, sure. So I I'd like to be, don't have a stormwater, I don't know, we call it analysis, plan.
Evaluation.
Something that tells us, never tell on all of their data, what is it gonna be when you're done.
Correct.
And if it's going with the black land. Um and and that doesn't drain properly, how how would that affect? Where where does where does the water sheet?
Well, yeah, there are wetlands related back in here, but they never related that here.
Where you're pointing is the high spot, and everything slows down. Like it over that.
If it's, if it was a constructed uh stormwater management facility, there's current. Uh the concentration of that is not, it's not.
I just think we needed to know what's going on there. There's, there's all those coordinating, and they have to tell them this. And so what are you looking for, you're not for that, you're asking for my thoughts, right?
Well, if 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 you're comfortable, I, if you if you're not comfortable making your recommendation to wave for late development. I will make that recommendation at the next submission that we made to you. But the the ideas that a letter with written way you request on.
There are storms that were going forward in seven, I don't know whether they are relative to this. You're not paving, um you're just paving with the presently gravel, right? You're not going further to that corner?
That's correct. And all the wa- all stormwater goes back to property, something.
Pretty much, it's paved as well as the very. Yeah, your slowly goes back.
Yeah, yeah, all all of the stormwater basically goes this this direction, you can see that the stormwater. So beyond, there is nothing that's going, wouldn't be going toward.
Is that your property too?
Uh yes, all of that and that. But that area is heavily grown, grown.
Yeah.
So.
Here, where are the others at? Up here, or top higher? So what do we need to do then? Go out there and act anyway, but the uh the applicant, I guess, is uh. Will be able to go away tonight saying that, all right, and not need to do the land development plan, because. The only thing that we're really developing is building the retainable, rest of the. And that there need to be some forward calculations for, and therefore I would fall, because I'm not sure exactly. What the accurately should be, like upon John, and say, well, we need provision. Yeah.
Yeah, and then.
That they have seen to over.
Okay, that's fine, maybe we can get you a little bit more information on that, and I would say the formal. Request for the waiver for way to.
Yeah, right.
With with the stormwater calculations.
Yeah, for the designation basis, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I do that, yeah.
Yeah, and just want you to know that we will also know in the plan that we.
Yeah. Have a nice night. You did say.
Yes, yes. Thank you, alright, thank you.
Yeah, we just have a ten longer, but you want to do specific meeting? We're gonna look to that fourth Thursday, Scott.
Like Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesdays, I think, as we did with um. What was it, um?
Yeah, we did that.
And that worked out pretty well, so Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, next week is fine for me, next week, that word. Uh who says? So we won't be there, but then the first weekend in May, we're good, whatever.
Weekend, you said, first week. If it's the first week in May, it would have to be, it would have to be Tuesday the second.
Oh, that's okay.
They put out the Wednesday the first, because that's.
Mother dog is standing.
Okay. You wanna do it then, is Tuesday, Tuesday, uh May second?
Let me just look.
Yeah, have a look. Good to me, Tuesday.
What would you like, what time?
Do it later in the afternoon? Yeah, I was going to be there, because my. I'm actually.
I can agree with him.
I would do all that, yeah.
Yeah, that would be the, that would be the point.
If we could stay away from the first Tuesday of the month, that is one of our zoning hearing board meetings. We currently don't have anything on schedule, but just in case.
Then Wednesday, a good few steps of Thursday.
Yeah, the last day of the third, I know, is, is a first, but I have to agree with Senator, so how about Thursday?
Thursday or?
Yeah.
Thursday and the fourth?
Yeah.
Remember that, I can't do it Thursday. You can do Monday, you said, right?
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Oh, I can do that, next weekend.
How about Monday the first then? Monday evening, Monday late afternoon? Saturday? Monday, May third, you wanna do five?
You tell me that.
Yeah.
Right?
I'm, I'm building a view here, I can have a messy.
Okay.
Two months, two and five thirty? I just have a kiss.
Sure.
How about five thirty, then I'm on the first, okay, sounds good?
Supervisors, I'm not down here. Day first, right?
This would be Monday, May one, five thirty.
Fifteen thirty, so. Would you send an email around the fact list?
Uh, yes, I will check with the other two supervisors, make sure the time works for them, uh, upon confirmation, we'll send everything out.
This is, this is Jacob, can, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Jacob.
Okay, cool, sorry, I'm on, I'm on the phone, um, in my car. Um, I can make the first, but I cannot stay later than like six thirty, six forty-five, because I have another meeting at seven that night.
Yeah, Jacob, that would be the same for me, because I have uh, two township uh, meetings on the earth, on your lawn. Southside being the max.
Yeah, I just have, yeah, that's two thousand. A couple of questions to think about, thought of questions here, one is what um, John brought up is that uh, do we really need regulations for um, businesses, especially commercialism? Is, is point is that merchants have a much better idea of what they need than we do. Um, the second is, in incentivized mixed use, um, and the commercial parking being used as a um, to credit for the uh, residential parking, since they really take place at different hours. Just a thought question, and the third is something that the uh, um, the uh, zoning hearing board brought up, uh, which is, why do we have parking only in the back? Why not in the front or in the back? I couldn't answer that, so.
Well, um, there, there are times where it's probably, uh, just because of the configuration, the property, or the thing is that um, not possible, it's just a question of residence, you're not allowed to have your garage, and further forward than your house. Just a thought question, that's what I'm going to do, anyway, I believe there's beautiful properties that have.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not knowing, I'm on the zoning hearing board, and uh, so, so the last piece of information is pretty, pretty hopeful for us. Because putting the parking uh, in front of the building and moving those buildings back from forty-seven, that they have no three sixty access to the back of the buildings, we were concerned about a life safety issue of the back of the building, but if you're staying strictly aesthetics for parking in the back versus parking in the front, uh, you know, it's just, if, if you think that that was truly what it was about, was about aesthetics?
Yes, I don't know that.
Cool.
First time we ever discussed it, that's what we got. It was about reorienting the, the faces of the commercial entities, the face in. So that people would go in and park towards the rear and in the middle, and then access on either side. So it's sort of the commercial use effect.
So it's a bit of a strip mall.
And the strip mall, yeah, the strip mall, where.
Way that pull right off the road.
Right.
Spot, right.
So it, it might be worth some thinking just as hard, whether there's some flexibility there. And I never thought of it until the question was brought up.
Well, why don't we, yeah, that's gonna be back and block the way a little time.
Well, I mean, really.
It is, there's landscaping.
The whole reason of this is to improve the town. And the look of the town, and the looks of the main commercial, pretty nice. That's the main reason, yes. And we're losing, and now we're just, now we're backing off on parking.
No, no.
No parking in the.
We're not backing off, I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, okay.
You just asked.
Either down the middle or commercial views where that orders back.
That's broken. That's me. What if we go land reeding?
Well, you want to show that, show off. So just after the legal, in front.
You should.
On the side.
And they're exact that way.
I don't have one reeding out there. Pretty messy, yeah.
I know, I know, you're just.
I think that, we'll be here, so when we start talking.
Very quick, sorry, I was asking for an update on Marshall's Falls, as you guys know, the board accepted the bid from Cobalt Construction on October twenty-sixth. Um, thereabouts January nineteenth, um, we got word from Cobalt that their Helical Pile Contractor had surveyed the area for the boardwalk, and had found that there were unspots that they couldn't feasibly put the contracting foundations into the boardwalk. As a result of that, Cobalt Construction and our engineer for project Variusit have been in discussions and have determined to reduce the boardwalk by two hundred and eighteen feet and increase the paved area maintenance for that. There's still in the process right now, we're coming up with those discussions and the change order numbers, so there has not been a change order in front of the board at this time. That's what's going on, we're still on uh, track to open late summer, early, late fall, and do a grand opening. Uh, the boardwalk is what will a lot of people, um, ADA access to know from the parking lot that will be the south part of the vertical, all wooden walls. So it starts off as a boardwalk, and as it progresses closer to the walls, it will turn into a stage. Um, because there are five, uh, higher than five percent rates on some of those places, we have to put handrails up on either side. Um, but they'll be there, Variusit is working to make sure we're in compliance.
Where's the action with ADA, um, you know, ramps?
Well, it, it's one involved for, for ramp, trails, you've got a little bit more leeway over a longer distance.
I couldn't tell you.
Two point five for, for ramps, is it?
One to twelve, meaning one, or twelve feet of.
Does that, does that, does that come down?
Uh, it will eventually, uh, the township just received three hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars as part of a base two grid. And that part will take the house down and build a secondary overflow parking lot further north on the property.
And what, what are we doing for management of that property in terms of maintenance and security, and so we don't have people destroying the graffiti like it, and thoughts on that?
We've noticed though, a large amount of the graffiti is house, um, so we'll see what happens as things progress, we haven't had an issue too much with graffiti in other parks. Um, we did have an issue with the sink, where they didn't um, tag some of the signs related and down the way. Um, but we're going to have to see what happens once. Uh, if it comes to the point that we need to install security cameras, very likely to be there. Um, if any of it. Um, and if it gets to the point where we turn around and go, hey, you know, maybe we need to put a restroom there. Uh, we kept the space around, so we can maybe do that in a phase three or four.
I didn't know, we should put security cameras in, what do you, you don't wait for that plan?
Yeah, I agree with that, you should consider that.
Because they're not that expensive, you, well, you have nice systems that are expensive, but it's also determined, not just like, there, you can see them, and people know that they're. When you say restroom, you should put something like Park Service has the uh.
Uh, that would be on second.
Yeah. That would be.
Yeah, it's like the uh, I think they have those at Ice Lake.
Where?
Ice Lake, um, in Mountain Home.
Yes, in Mountain Home, yeah.
They have a water gap, you know, that's still each and.
Uh, please, one question, I believe the Smith King space is including the ADA one, uh, phase two, I will leave it as planned again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One last type of, if I may, um, the next ordinance update that township is doing is we're taking a look at ordinance, our chapters one, two, and four. And we're finally going to be putting in the subdivision requirements for the paper copies that you mentioned, that you would like changed like a year ago. Yeah, they're gonna be.
I don't even mind here, but I'm.
I believe, uh, there's a very convenient recycling line due to the inconvenience. They're on their way, the updated. The signs. There's here, um, give me just a moment to get my.
Did they, oh, did they have kind of ad or how was your?
Oh, oh, yeah. Yeah, now, first thing now is the general update one through four and um, the subdivision stuff. And then general date five through seven, um, then the fence ordinance, again, we'll talk about it here. Uh, ten, eight, ten fourteen, then fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, then twenty-one, and twenty, like, we're just going through. Um, as more to order, you guys decided something's more important and need to be.
Then are we, so it's in a separate chapter?
Uh, that is entirely up to you and how you want to shift it, this is just my priority that that didn't happen.
I think we had a chapter for a vote of like.
It's very possible that we're maintaining something.
Okay, thank you for the answer. May, what should we do?
Wow, that's.
Well, I asked you a question, man.